There, ladies. Welcome to downtown Grand Forks Five, formerly known as the Arrow Building. This is the Grand Forks City Council Committee of the Whole for Monday, July 10th, 2023, under one order, 1.1. Welcome and roll call.
Wyld.
Here.
Sonski.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Mommy.
Here.
Daddy.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Great. Under two updates and informational items, 22.1, 2024 mayor's budget indicator salary plan, et cetera, et cetera. Sure thing. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. So tonight, our plan is to give you a preview of different components of the 2024 budget, how it's coming together, particularly with the general fund and also the proposed salary plan. As we get into this, we'll begin with an update on budget performance that to start the year 2023 and some first quarter revenue comparisons. Then look to the 2024 preliminary budget and some key revenue projection, projections and assumptions used. Then we'll spend much of the time tonight with our Human Resources Director Tanji, who is going to be presenting the salary plan. Finally, we'll just look at some important dates coming up. Cheryl, if you can move the slide forward. Yes, can you go next slide? And one more slide, please. Okay, so then 2023, to look at how we started off so far this year, we are on good footing with the general fund revenue in total at the end of the first quarter at 52% overall and expenses at 25%. This is what we like to see. We've also attached a handout A that has been included in your packet that breaks down by category. In summarizing the revenue, then it does make sense that we're greater than 25% at the first quarter as property taxes front loaded on that in that revenue. So that skews the overall percent. But with that said, revenue is coming in strong. And I've noted a few of those for your reference on this slide, and we'll touch on more of that in the upcoming slides. And looking to expenses, then we're tracking very close to budget. You can see at the end of the first quarter, we're 25% of budget overall. When I look as of June 30th, we're at 46.5% of budget on the expense side. Next slide. Some of the key revenues that we track are shown here stated in the highway user, the gas tax. Give a little history on gas tax. We are down from its high that we saw in 2014, but this revenue is trending up this year as compared to last year so far, year to date. For reference, at its high in 2014, to give you a little background here, this had brought in roughly $3.8 million annually. And 2023 budget is at 2.9 million. We're tracking pretty close to that number so far year to date. When I look at the numbers today, we're at 40% of the budget with five months having posted up here. State aid, that's coming in very well. Gas, as with the gas tax, we did see state aid peak around 2014. At that time, it had brought in roughly 4.9 million to the general fund. That has been coming back up in 2022 actual, came in just under 4.1 million and it's been coming in very well this year as well. After five months collections, we're at 50% of budget there on CD. Next slide. So on sales tax, you do get my monthly reports. So you probably already know much about this, but we are up just over 7% as compared to 2022. In looking at a rolling 12 month, we're up approximately 5%, which is noted on the slide there. 2022 was a, it was a very strong year. We set the bar pretty high. We were at 9% over the previous year. So you have seen some good increases there. Just for a little note too, I like to share the highest 10 collection month. So hit that four times in 2022. So far, we have hit that all high list two times this year. So it's coming in strong. Next slide. So that's on, and we can go next slide again. That's a look at where we are today and a little history, looking at how we project out the 2024 budget. If I could have you just go one previous, Cheryl, on sales and use tax there. So as we look to project sales tax, we took a look back at just a 10-year period. We're averaging just under 4% on an annual base increase. So what we built into the 2024 budget and projection is 3% annual increase for the sales tax revenue. This does impact several funds. It's noted on this slide, the number of funds that it touches. This is a volatile, more volatile source of revenue than property tax. So we want to make sure we're conservative on our estimates and realizing numbers that we can stay staying for these funds. But based on history, we feel like that 3% increase on 22 actual is a conservative number. Next slide. Then looking at CD, touched on that earlier a bit with the history of CD collections. We're budgeting a 4% increase over 22 actual here, which is in line with the estimated projection that the state came up with a projection communicated by the legacy cities. We're very close to what they were there. This brings in nice increase to our job here. So that's, that's good news. We're not where we were at 2014, but we're creeping closer to that. Next slide. And then the highway user or gas tax is stated earlier. We have seen that decline from the peak in 2014. This has been impacted most likely with more hybrid vehicles, more people working remotely. So we have seen some declines in the, in the gas tax. Based on the projections from the state communicated through the legacy cities, we have a 2% decrease budgeted here, 2% lower than 22 actual for the gas tax. Good news is, and John Bringsham shared this with you on his legislative recap last week, that the legislature did approve a legacy fund distribution. We expect to receive roughly $890,000 in December, which helps fill that gap. And we do anticipate and have built into the budget for next biennias as well. That $890,000 is for a two-year period. Next slide. Perry Dunn is attorneys for the oil and gas bucket that cities and counties share. John also highlighted this last week. We were hopeful to get that bucket in line in front of the large state SIS bucket. That did not happen, but we do expect to receive our approximate $12 million share in this next biennial. And we have did receive it in the current. This budget primarily is used for the streets infrastructure. We budget roughly $10 million each biennial for streets and the other $2 million each biennial for lease water infrastructure projects. Next slide. Building permit revenue, that's coming in very strong. When I look to this revenue as of June 30th, I just took a peek. We're already at 78% of budget. So very strong on this side. We're budgeting this in 2024 budget at approximate five-year average, which is roughly 3% over the 2023 budget. Franchise fees is made up of cable, Excel, nodak. Cable, we have seen some decreases in that revenue store since 2016. Looking at the 2023 year-to-date budget performance, we're tracking pretty close to where we had our budget set with five months collections, we're at 43% of budget there. Excel, the makeup there is roughly 70% electric, 30% gas. Whether the usage will impact this as long as, as well as Excel's rates. For now, we're holding this budget at the 2023 budget levels consistent. Looking at 2024, we'll continue to monitor that. Nodak, we have seen a significant bump up in there due to our most recent high electric users, which is noted on this slide here. We have inserted just a chart for reference so you can see the most recent numbers that, that nodak franchise fee has brought in. Next slide. The value of a mill is growing, estimated to grow approximately from 255,000 to 277,000, with 2.35% of that coming from growth and the remainder from valuation. We've attached handle B for your reference. That will break out all the different funds that are supported, at least partially by property tax and the dollars that that levy will produce. So that's on your handle B. When you look at that handout, you'll see that it's not just the general fund, but also it supports funds such as the library, the airport, public transit, dial-a-ride, public building fund, just a few. Preliminary, the mayor is bringing forth a budget that will include a half-mill decrease overall. And we've inserted a bar chart there as well. That'll just give you a look back at that, the number of mills levied by the city. Next slide. So before I turn it over to Tanji, this slide here will just sum up the preliminary draft of the general fund budget. Handout C is in your packet material and this breaks it down further. We, we already went through much of the key revenue drivers, but this slide will just break down those expenses for you by both category, by function. The largest, of course, component of the general fund is people. As you can see, 77% of the general fund is for wages and benefits. If I were to be showing you a graphic of total city budget, that wouldn't be the case, but we'll present the budget in total on the 24th when I back in front of you here. Public safety, then, is the largest function of the general fund, primarily police and fire. This budget does include the mayor's priority of funding the salary plan, Plan A. And so this is a larger increase that you've seen in recent years, but has a, a component of some catch-up in there, which Tanji will go through that salary plan with you all in more detail.
Thank you, Murray. Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. I'm happy to be up here once again to present on our proposed salary plan for 2024. Attached to tonight's agenda is the entirety of the Condrey and Associates classification and compensation study, as well as that same information in the city's standard formatting that you're familiar with. It ended, it ended up being quite a large packet. So my apology is it does get a little bit repetitive. Next slide. Okay, so in 2022, city administrative, the city administrative team recommended to the city council to initiate a classification and compensation review process due to concerns with our current salary plan. Specificing concerns of the current salary plan are compression issues, lack of predictability and inability of employees to reach midpoint. City council members, city administration and employee representatives met to discuss these issue, issues and ultimately in December of 2022, the city council supported moving forward with the classification and compensation study submitted by Condrey and Associates. Next slide. In January of this year, Condrey and Associates held two virtual meetings to describe the process for the classification and compensation study. One meeting was for department heads and the other was for all employees. The first step in the process was a position questionnaire completed by current employees holding the current classifications. If the position was held by numerous employees, then a group of employees completed the questionnaire. Following the questionnaire completion, Condrey and Associates interviewed 40% of the classifications. With the data gathered from the questionnaire and the interviews, Condrey and Associates gave a preliminary grade to each classification, utilizing a factor evaluation system. Then Condrey and Associates reviewed our current salary plan and recording structures to bolster the internal analysis. This was followed by a market survey to compare whole regional entities to determine our competitiveness. And all of that information was condensed into the proposed classification and compensation study that was presented to the city council May of 2023. Since that presentation, the city council, Human Resources, has presented the proposed salary plan on 24 separate occasions to employees. The plan has been very well received and has addressed the salary plan concerns that precipitated the study. The plan is predictable. The plan allows employees to reach midpoint and the plan addresses some of the compression issues identified. Next slide. So the proposed salary plan utilizes 15 regional entities for comparison. These entities should look familiar to everyone because on the whole, with a couple of exceptions, these are the same entities we utilize for our current salary plan. The cities of Duluth and Payne have been swapped out with the city of Mankato and we have added the state of North Dakota as well as Grand Forks County as survey comparators. At the salary plan information session in May, council member Kuwami had asked about replacing two of the South Dakota entities with Great Falls and Missoula, Montana entities. We did gather that data and provided it to Condrey and Associates, who ran the numbers and found that it did not alter the compensation system in any meaningful way. Next slide. So Condrey and Associates presented the city with two plan alternatives. Plan A is structured at 102.5% of the market and Plan B is structured at 100% of the labor market. Built into the plan design are one-time equity adjustments designed to mitigate compression issues. Plan A and B modified do not include those equity adjustments. The cost to implement Plan A is 8.58%. And just to provide a little perspective, we did run the numbers on our current salary plan and that increase would run 7%. So the city can implement a more competitive pay plan that would mitigate compression issues and provide employees with predictable salary growth, all for a little over what we would normally have been pushing for our current plan. Also, in the last two years, there have been many entities that have provided mid-year inflationary adjustments or adjustments to specific job classes of employees, such as police officers along the way. The city has not recommended any mid-year adjustments or individual adjustments in hopes of implementing a more comprehensive, long-term approach to employee compensation that benefits more than one class of employees. Plan A is supported by administration and is built into the 2024, but mayor's budget. Next slide. So the structure of the salary plan is a grade and step system that has 28 grades, each 5% apart until grade 20. And after grade 20 and up, it has a temperate percent separation. The plan has 18 steps with each step being 2.5% apart. And just to reiterate, the plan is based on the city's internal value system as well as the external salary survey to ensure that it's both equitable and competitive. Next slide. So what does this look, plan look like for 2025 and beyond? The plan is designed to have employees receive one step per year. That's the 2.5%. This step will be based on a satisfactory job performance evaluation, but will not be a graduated benefit like in our current plan. It will be an all or nothing performance increase. In addition to the step increase, the plan is designed to increase each year by the employee cost index percentage. Next slide. The employee cost index is also known as ECI as an economic indicator designed to measure the cost of employees to employers over time. The Bureau of Labor Statistics produces the ECI quarterly and the plan is designed to utilize the fourth quarter ECI number for the following budget cycle year, meaning the December 2023 ECI number will be utilized for the 2025 budget year. In addition, it is recommended that K grades be resurated every four to five years. So this is a look at the proposed salary plan and how the dollars shake out across all funds. The general fund, as you can see, or the cost of implement the total plan is 2.8 million dollars with 65% of that coin coming from the general fund. Next slide, please. And this, this slide illustrates how the cost of implementing the proposed salary plan is broken out into the general fund. 47% of the cost of implementation is regrading the classifications, while 53% of the cost of implementation comes from the equity adjustments. Next slide. This slide breaks down the equity adjustments a little bit further. 68% of the equity adjustments will go to employees with four or four or more years of service. 22% will go to employees with one to three years of service and 10% will go to employees with less than one year of service. The equity adjustment will be impactful for the retention of our current employees and as well as lessening pay compression. This is all the information I have to share on the proposed salary plan for the evening, but I do have one more slide, next slide, please, to highlight for the mayor's 2024 budget. So this slide reflects all the promotions budgeted for 2024 across all funds. Typically, we would also show the additional positions that we added to the 2024 budget. However, this year we held off on adding more positions in the budget in favor of implementing a compensation system that uses our current pay compression issues, allows the city to be more competitive in the region and allows employees the ability to move past market midpoint and predict pay increases into the future. Next slide. As a reminder of the budget timeline, there is a joint city council and Alaris Commission meeting on noon at the Alaris Center on July 17. The presentation of the 2024 mayor's budget will be July 24th, along with preliminary approval of the 2024 budget on August 7th and final approval on September 18th. With all of that, I'd be happy to field with any questions that you may have on the proposed salary plan.
Any questions, Mr. Laver?
I appreciate the desire to implement the plan and to simultaneously cut mills. It's a nice trick and it looks like it's been pulled off. Do we have enough staff in all of our?
Do we have enough staff? We are consistently seeing staff turnover and we are attempting to fill all our vacant positions. There are departments across the city that are short-staffed and have been and will continue to be until I think some of the salary plan adjustments will address some of those concerns and will be able to recruit more effectively for certain positions, dispatching 911 center is, is one of the main concerns that this plan will, will assist in recruiting for. But yes, we do have openings across the city.
Like most employers in the region of the country.
Correct.
Thanks.
Other questions? Mr. Wyld, Mr. Ronnie, Mr. Bean?
Ms. Ovina, question. You said that the December ECI will be used for the next budget cycle. But you also said that the numbers come out quarter.
Did you?
So are you saying the cumulative for that month, for the year when it comes up December? Or just the, the December?
Just the final December quarterly. Yeah, that's how it's, that's how the plan is designed for the following, the year following. So not December 23 would be used for 2025. Yeah.
I understand, but perhaps I need to look into how the ECI is calculated more closely. To me, that doesn't make any sense.
Versus utilizing maybe March 30th or?
No, the average over the year or the cumulative? I don't know. I guess I don't know what this quarter's ECI versus next quarter. Are they, do they add up over the year? Do you take all four of them and add them up and that, that becomes what the ECI is for the year?
I can certainly, I can certainly look at what, what?
Because I don't think that, I don't think that's right. I think it's cumulative over the course of the year.
I can certainly take a look.
But I, but I don't know for sure because I haven't looked into it enough. Which I was going to ask you some questions about ECI, for example. This is one. Is it cumulative? I don't know. I see in the, in this, on this page 21, in the chart, it says public sector, public sector 12-month historical ECI data. But I have the ECI data and I can't find any references to specific public sector. So I'm wondering what exactly, which exact ECI number are we using?
It is a public sector.
It is a public.
Yeah, yeah, it's on the Bureau of Labor Statistics under the public sector.
Searching Excel isn't the easiest thing to do.
I can, I can send you the, the historical data on the ECI number.
I've got the last 20 years of ECI in front of me. I just don't know how to read it exactly. I'll, I'll look into that. So, okay. Do you know then? What was last year's ECI?
Well, 4%.
December was not 4% according to the spreadsheet that I'm looking at.
For the public sector, for 2022, it was 4%.
Love to see those numbers.
Oh, I'm sorry, 5.1%. It was 2021 was 4%.
Okay, do you have an average over the last 10 years? For, for example, what's?
2.77%.
2.77. So we're averaging 2.7. So we're building in, the concept is to build in through the step process 2.5 with an average additional of 2.77. So we're averaging over 5% raises for our employees under the current, what is being pulled?
That is what's being proposed.
Indeed. And that's because we're playing catch-up from many years.
But, but we're adjusting, we're also under the plan making a significant one-time adjustment of, of salaries.
The, the 8.5% roughly?
8.58%, correct. And this is, yeah, and this is?
The existing plan is already made at 7.7.
Equity adjustment that's being made is being split out between, between employees to take care of both the fact that we're catching up as well as the compression issue that we have with our one-time $1,000 raise across the board.
Correct. That's correct.
President Sanders, when I, if Cheryl, can we go back a couple of slides to slide 21? And just to go one ahead. So just to, based on what Tanji presented here, what, what my thinking was when I saw that you have this most recent bump up that maybe skews that average a bit, if you look at the period of time. That was the only thing I would point out in addition, that maybe that's more of your norm and your average is a little bit higher recently due to that recent bump.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll thank you. Good, very good point. Absolutely, we have data that is skewing it to look higher than, no question. I, I'm going to find the public sector in this monstrous spreadsheet. It's got over 40,000 rows of data in it. So I'm going to dig in and try to find the public sector. I'd like to see what the averages, they have information available dating back to 20 or 2001. So 20 years of data, let's throw out the outliers, for example, whether it's last year or the last few years. I'd like to know what the actual average is so we have an understanding of what the expectation would be.
And I have that data and I can provide that to you without the outliers.
Perfect, great, sounds good, sounds good. Ms. Ovina, because this is such a big, so first of all, I'll be very honest with everybody. I don't like a step plan. I don't think that that's news to anyone. I've been relatively open about that. I don't, I don't like, I don't like the city being tied into requiring raises when we don't know what the budgets are going to be in the future. We don't know what our revenues are going to be. We don't know what our expenses are going to be. So tying us to having to raise taxes, property taxes in order to meet commitments to our employees, I just don't like it. I'm not saying people don't deserve a minimum of 2.5% raise every year. It's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I don't like being, being tied to it because, just because of the unknown. I also, I, even though we are saying in here that we're also going to be adding the ECI, you don't know who the council members are going to be in the future. You don't know who the mayor is going to be in the future. And just because we're agreeing to a step salary plan doesn't mean the future council is going to put this in the budget. It doesn't mean it's going to happen. Right. And so this is also a reason why I don't like this plan. I just don't like the fact that, that to me, this provides less, although you're guaranteed your 2.5%, which is great. It doesn't guarantee that you're going to get any of that ECI. It does not guarantee. And I think I just, you, you just never know who's going to be sitting here in the future. That's, that's all. I ultimately, as I told others, I ultimately, as I told others within other folks that work for our community that I visited with, all support, all support moving to this sort of a plan if that's what the employees want. I will. I will tell all the employees, I disagree. I think it's a bad idea. I do not believe it's in your best interest, but, okay. Lastly, my last comment is, is there any way we can implement the, the adjustments, the compression adjustments over two years? And the reason I'm asking is because I know we're cutting a half a mil, but when, when cities' property, our citizens' property values are going up 6.5%. And I think cutting one or a half a mil to say we're cutting mills is a hollow gesture. I would rather cut a couple mills and implement this program, the process over a couple of years, phase it in and get it done. I'm not saying I'm not going to support it. I just think there's got to be some give and take. I think what, what we're presented with is I, I think this is relatively one-sided. This is a one-sided plan in favor of our employees, which again, I'm not against. I'd just like to try to figure out how we can do more for the people that have to pay the salaries. So, again, I'll, if everybody, if this is what people want, I'll get behind it and I won't complain about it. I just disagree.
Council President Sandy, I'd just like to point out that this salary plan, much like our current salary plan, is always brought forward and needs to be approved as part of the next year's budget cycle. And so as our current plan, as this plan will be, it'll always be subject to the city council approval. And so it will have to be reviewed, both the step and the ECI each year.
Okay. Mr. Weber, further comment? We, no matter what we were, would vote during this budget cycle, we cannot obligate future councils. In a similar way, this, this salary plan, I believe, is a budgeting tool to offer predictability so we can anticipate. This is what will be recommended. This is what future budgets will be based upon. But those budgets still require a council vote. And even the mayor would be putting together, whoever the mayor is, would need to look at this tool, the larger picture and make a determination. So we can't tie the hands of future councils. This payroll plan does not tie the hands of future budgets. It's simply a tool to help with that. Tonight, we are not looking for a vote. This is information.
Information only and an opportunity for questions to be asked.
One, one quick question.
Sure. Mr. Clonan?
Just, so are the employees of the city familiar with the concept that while the plan could be approved and set in place, if it's not approved during the budget, you know, there's no guarantee. So I know that the goal is predictability, but really, at the end of the day, the council can not approve it for three years in a row. And is that well-known? Do employees understand that? And are they okay with that as part of the plan, understanding that it's, it's still kind of up in the air, even though the goal is to not be up in the air?
Councilmember Kami and Council President Sandy, yes. Much like our current plan, it does have to be reviewed every year. And it's the understanding of employees that it does have to be approved with each budget cycle.
Yes, Mr. Weber. So let me walk back where I said a moment ago. Well, this council cannot tie the hands of future councils, and this tool can't tie the hands of future budgets. This is an agreement with, with the city employees, that this is the tool that we are approving at this point, if, if we approve it. This is the tool that we're agreeing to work with for, for future budgets.
Correct. At this point, this, this would be the structure of the recommended salary plan going forward. Yes.
I think to, to my point, though, again, for future for future councils, it's easy to say, you're getting your 2.5% raise. Right? That's easy. It's also, in my opinion, then, easy to say, hey, you're already getting your 2.5% raise. There is, there is more money available. We're not going to raise taxes to put in the ECI. Whereas under our previous plan, we had paid-for-performance and market built in. We had the pool of money that we segregated between the two. And we started with a, here's the amount of money that we have, and then we worked with that. Whereas this is, you get 2.5% built in, and then we also need some more money that's fluctuating based upon an ECI number. It's just, it's easy to say, well, let's just leave the ECI out for 2.5%, move on. That's just the way, I'm, again, I'm not proposing that. I'm just saying that I know how, I get paid, this is what I do in my job. I get paid to try to think about how other people are going to think. That's what I believe. It becomes a very easy way to think, in terms of that process.
But in terms of my walking back, just that I tried to do a moment ago, that would be breaking faith. If, if we say that this is the plan that, that the city staff want and then council approves, and then we just ignore that plan in the future, that would be acting in bad faith. And I don't think that's been the case for previous councils, and I don't anticipate that would be the case for future councils.
President Sandy?
President Mr. Weigl.
Tangi, can you explain the performance review process that the city has for its employees?
Councilmember Weigl, Council President Sandy, the current performance evaluation system and the performance increases are broken out of our salary plan. We survey our 12 comparators currently, and we come up with a, an overall percentage that the employer, that the salary plan is going to use. And then we also survey benchmark data, and that determines the market movement, which is always accounted for first, and whatever is remaining of that initial percentage gets designated to performance evaluation.
That's under our current plan. You're describing our current plan. I don't think that's the question.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's what I heard. Apology.
I'm looking more so, if I'm Todd's employee, how am I graded based on my performance for the year? Is it solely you meet expectations or you don't meet expectations? Is there a one through five system? What, what does a city have in the specific process?
In this proposed plan?
Just?
The annual plan.
Annual process?
The process for evaluating employees.
Okay, we have performance evaluation system. It's one through five. And an adequate performing employee gets a three. Inadequate or less than adequate is a two and a one. Our performance evaluation system does not actually allow for any percentage if anyone is under a 2.75% of the overall five. So if you score under a 2.75, you would not receive a performance increase. And so the higher you get in your percentage based on your department, that performance dollars in your department is split out. But it's also dependent on where you're at.
Under our current plan.
Yeah.
Is that what you're giving out, Mr. Weigl? I think
Yes.
What you do is, what, what, what are the employee evaluations? What, what effect do they have on, under the proposed plan?
So under the proposed plan, we will still use that one-through-five system, and we'd still use that 2.75% cutoff for employees. So employees who would not, do not meet that 2.75 would not get that 2.5% increase.
But somebody that gets a five and somebody gets a three are going to get the same raise?
That's correct.
Right, so we're not actually rewarding, there is no path for hired achievers to earn more?
No, that's correct. It's a, it's a adequate, yeah, as long as you're performing your job adequately, you will get the performance increase. We do have career paths for employees with promotional opportunities that, that we design for each department. So high performers can promote and do have a career ladder.
President Sandy, another question?
Yes, Mr. Weigl.
And so, and maybe it's a two-part question, but one, how many employees this last year did not get a PFP raise due to performance? And the second part of the question would be is how do we keep this plan, if everybody gets 2.5% solely for showing up, doing their job, and meeting the standard, how do we, how do we keep mediocrity from creeping in? Because I've always been a firm believer in, if you work hard, you get additional certifications, maybe you don't promote to a different position. You're happy where you're at, but you work your butt off and do everything that's being asked of you. And no matter what, you still get that same percent as the guy that, next to you that doesn't take those additional steps to do more.
Councilmember Weigl, yes, you are correct. Well, first of all, we had about six individuals that didn't receive performance increases for 2023. So the, the, the number is very low, but we tend not to keep low performers to, the attrition out. As far as keeping people motivated, performance evaluations can, in some instances, be motivating, but at other times, they cannot, or they can actually do the opposite and demotivate employees. It can cause unnecessary competition within departments. It can cause higher stress levels. So having a step in grade system isn't necessarily bad. And I would say that overall, our current salary system with our performance increases has been demotivating within the last year, five years or so. It's hard for employees to see how, how their increase, how their score is actually affected with their increase when someone who's lower in the comp ratio gets a higher increase, and they've got a higher score, but they're closer to the midpoint. So there are some challenges we, we have with our current system where the performance isn't doing what it's supposed to be doing. That performance pay isn't as motivating as we'd like to see it. And frankly, we've had some challenges getting people to even become engaged with the performance evaluation system because of how demotivating it has been and begun. I think, I think it's important to point out that this salary plan system that we've used has been 20 years, which is a heck of a good run for a salary plan system. It's a good plan. I mean, if it wasn't a good plan to implement this new, better plan for only 1.5, you know, 8% more to get higher in the market, we're real close. I mean, it's a good plan, but the fact is people have lost faith in this plan. It's time for a change, and it's time to come up with something that's easier to explain for, to people and easier for people to see, you know, here's my path.
President Sandy, can I continue just for another minute?
Certainly, Mr. Weigl.
Tangi, I agree with you that people have lost confidence in the performance aspect of it. You and I completely agree on that. I've seen what's gone into that, and it's, many times it's probably pennies or nickels or dimes. There's not a whole lot going in there. But in a sense where I do disagree with you is that competition is a good thing. Life is a competition many times, whether it's applying for a job or promotion or, or anything we do. There is competition there, and I, I think competition, more times than not, also brings out the best in people. And that might just be my opinion, but I, I do think that there has to be some level of competition to push employees to continue to reach and grow within either their current position or if they choose one day to promote to a different position. I just don't like the fact that as long as you show up and you do your job, you'll, you get 2.5%. To me, it creates mediocrity for the employees that are, are going to go above and beyond.
Councilmember Weigl, I'd just like to throw another thought process in. I feel like high-performing employees perform for internal, on, on an intrinsic basis. And it's not all about extrinsic rewards. So I don't think we will see a drop-off in performance implementing this new system. But, you know, we will see.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Weigl, I think, I think what you have, I think we should be very, very proud of the organization that we have here in the City of Grand Forks because we have such great teams. So if you go to any department that you have, whether they're in City Hall or in other departments, Public Works, what have you, they're all working as a team. And so when you work as a team, you're trying to, you're trying to perform and compete for the greater good of the team. And instead of trying to get one up on one of your teammates. And so I think that's one of the unique things that we have, and that's all about our culture here with the city from the top down and from the bottom up, is that nobody wants to let the team down in your performance. And, and ultimately, what they don't want to do is let the citizens of Grand Forks down. And what, they don't want to let you down. So I don't think we have fear that people are going to, not going to want to compete because they don't want to let their team members down because of the kind of culture that we have. Certainly, that can be eliminated quickly. And I think what's been demotivating is, and I just want to go through the, our performance evaluation system, it's not like a beauty contest, like, I think you're on 3.75 and you're on 4.2. It's, you have like six or eight categories. You're judged on a one-to-five scale. You end up with a, you end up with a score, and then you got to write some notes underneath. If, if I should get a four and not a three, you got to write some things that I did above and beyond on the category. We're still going to do all those things. At the end of the day, I think it should allow employees to have a more intrinsic value of what I did this, this past year. And otherwise, what happens at the, once everything gets approved, I don't know, September, October, November, whenever, everyone's going to get everyone's scores, and you know what they do? Some people look, why did I get a 3.75 and my colleague got a 3.85? It's probably worth two pennies. However, it gets demotivating, and what happens then? Everyone goes to a certain score. And if you're the supervisor, because you have a team, say you've got an asphalt crew out there, you're generally going to rank them in a similar way unless somebody's not doing well. I just want to discuss that employees aren't competing with one another. They're competing as a team and really wanting to do well. And I think one of the great things the mayor's done, and you guys have really been great supporters of, of allowing promotions and allowing us to create a system in which if you meet certain criteria, you can keep promoting up. And so that's been one of the best and most motivating thing that we've been able to do. So when Tangi showed all those positions where we're adding promotions, that's really the things that have been helping for us, to motivate us. The other thing why we didn't add positions to this budget is, even among the employees, we wanted to make sure, we want to make sure that we can pay people more appropriately, more competitively. And we want to make sure, we want to be conservative too, because right now, this city is performing quite well on the revenue side. We want to make sure we can afford what we have. And so that gives us some time to build into what we have for employees to make, but make sure that we're conservative, that not some, we're adding a lot to our employees that we may already not be able to afford in the near future. And I just want to also point out two cases where the city council and the mayor, mayors, both, two different mayors have not funded the full salary. And I think it was in around 2018 where we did not fund the entire amount, plus or minus, just because we just couldn't make it fit within the budget, and the employees understood that. And of course, in 2021, in the midst of the pandemic, we, we went with a cross-court 1% increase. And that, I think the employees understood that, you understood that, and, and the mayor understood that. So we, we have from time to time when things have come up, whether we just, the revenues weren't as strong as we anticipated or, you know, things that were out of control, we have recommended to USA Council, and you've accepted on funding something less for our employees.
We did overfund the following year. We did overfund the following year.
Last year.
Joyfully.
Yeah.
Because of the high inflation.
Well, and because we underfunded before, so we're trying to catch up. Mr. Weber, you have a legal pad full of notes.
We're often encouraged to run city more like a business. I know businesses that pay bottom dollar. And I know businesses that have a reputation for taking care of their employees and paying well. And I know which ones I prefer to spend my money with. I, I know where I get better service, and part of our job is to assure the taxpayers of Grand Forks' service for their, for tax dollars. Competition is antithetical to the cooperative effort required of any team. And if we have a system that requires people to suck up or to knock down their, their fellow workers, that's, that's not what we need in developing that, that team effort. Many of us, because we're part of that team as well, and, and many council members I met with city staff some months ago when... When, when did we do that? When was that?
Last year.
It was last year already. Okay. Uh, at that time, we listened to their concerns and pledged to consider uh the results. You were there. I remember what? You were, I, it was the first time I watched you hug someone. At that time, we listened to their concerns and pledged to consider the results of the study and, and its recommendations. Um, and here's why this plan provides future councils, councils with the rationale for not ignoring this plan. I don't think that we will ignore it. Um, it's far more expensive to have turnover, lousy retention and recruitment struggles than it is to simply pay your people properly. Um, and I think that this plan uh has been thoroughly vetted uh and is, gives us uh what we were looking for that night. And we see that uh from the support of city staff to me. Thanks.
Further questions from this? Well, that. Thank you. Great presentation. Appreciate it. So I said, are we gonna walk through the timeline, man? I can do it. Everybody, uh, tonight's the first meeting, presentation, July. Oh, we've got the joint meeting with the Alaris Commission on July 17th. Presentation of the 2024 Mayor's Budget. July 24th, August 7th, preliminary approval on it, September 18th is final approval. Right?
That is correct.
I prepared your last one.
Questions, that's why please let me know. But yes, our next meeting is this coming Monday with a joint meeting uh known as the Alaris Center. And it's like Mr. Sandy said, uh, President Sandy said, we'll present the budget on the 24th of July.
The joint mission and meeting is happening on the 17th.
A week from today.
There was some confusion on the calendar invites, but that's.
That meeting was originally set for the 12th, um, and due to a conflict that got moved to the 17th. So you should have received a revised meeting invitation for that. Yes, Mr. Phelan, thank you. President Sandy, members of the committee. Um, Ms. Rosberg sent out a, an email to you all with an invitation and in it she noted, if you come early, she's going to give you a tour uh facility and a suite remodel specifically. So um, if you want to come and have some time, it would be great to, they'd love to show you around.
If you haven't had the tour of the Alaris Center, you should go and see. It's great. Any other thoughts on the salary plan or anything before we move on? Okay, good. Uh, discussion items. Uh, three pound on special events, letter of intent and request for co-mingling for the wedding and the downtown street fair. Ms. Simeoni.
My good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. We have a, a returning event and a new event. First event is uh the Casper Wedding that'll be held in Moon Park in Phil's Berry Park. Those are the parks that are next to Kelly's Ivy and uh Bourbon Stampede and the alleyway between the two. Um, the liquor license is held by Slidestreet and actually Matt Casper is the holder and also like the groom. And they are closing Slidestreet that night and will be um hosting their reception and their dinner and everything within that area.
Mr. Soski, question, comment?
Do we have to move?
You, you can do my notebook. Is there a second? Second, about Weber. Further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say the five to say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, which carries unanimously, and then the downtown street fair that we do every year.
And it is the same layout from the last three years.
Great. Mr. Weber moves approval and Mr. Soski seconds. Further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, say the five to say aye.
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 Close same sign, which carries unanimously on 3.2. We've got the resolution related to issuance of revenue bonds on behalf of all true health system, it's a public hearing date. Mr. Sandy.
Thank you again, President Sandy, members of the committee. Uh, so I did, uh, the staff report states, we received uh word recently that it attaches the request um of a bond issuance um by Ultra. Attached, you will find the, the resolution authorizing the issuance and it sets a public hearing for August 21st for consideration. Um, state statute allows uh the city to issue bonds uh for um health system as such as Ultra, and we have done this in the past. Uh, they are requesting to issue under the North Dakota Industrial Development Act of 1955. This is not a liability um of, of the city. And proceeds would be used to pay for portions of the cost of the construction of, of the hospital project. And we do have Mr. Derek Bull and Todd Forbald here tonight, and they will be providing you uh with a, an updated briefing uh on, on that project and their financing fees. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to these two gentlemen.
Mr. Forbald, good evening. Thanks for being here.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity, President Sandy and council members to be with you here tonight. And uh here in a second, you'll also meet Derek Bull, our interim chief financial officer. Before we uh go into our presentation, also want to thank you uh on the council, uh the mayor, uh those in this community, just for the support of this project, it's been phenomenal. And hopefully, as you're driving by on Columbia, you see the progress as this uh moves forward. Next slide, please. I thought, I know you have a really big agenda. I would do just three quick items before I hand it over to Derek to go specifically uh kind of into the timeline. And uh, uh, what we're looking forward to proceed is just sort of the state of what's happening at Ultra. And there are many metrics that describe whether an organization is successful or not. And I should say what you see there uh will be a future state here uh very soon for the uh main hospital campus. Number one, it's certainly not important, most important in terms of finances. Uh, 2022 was the worst year on record for hospitals and we uh bucked that trend to be slightly positive. And this fiscal year, we're on the calendar fiscal year, we're 2% positive or just shy of that uh with the median in the industry being break even. Now, again, that's not your mission, it's not why you exist, but that allows you to grow and invest into uh things like this, which are great for the community. Secondly, quality, we got some really exciting news from Medicare. They have a quality rating system called the star rating. It's not like Amazon or things like that. It's based on 47 metrics that allows a more apples to apples comparison of healthcare organizations in our country. And it's a zero sum game. So the bottom 10% in those scores are one star. The bottom quartile is two star. The middle 50 are three star. And then the upper is just like the bottom, upper quartile, four star. Upper um decile is the five star. And we just uh were notified by CMS that Ultra will be rated four star. Uh, this rating system's been around about, I think, 10 years and Ultra has never been a four star. And so there continues to be progress. Is that where we wanna say no? Uh, we, as a leadership team, as an organization, have committed to being five star when we enter into our new uh facility. And again, it's not about ratings or acknowledgements like that. It's really the byproduct that uh for patients and family members in terms of uh the care they get. More important uh than finances and quality. And lastly, I'll just talk a little bit about recruitment and then I'll hand it over to uh, to Derek. Um, we've been very successful of late. And while there are still, especially in the physician ranks, when there's still some really tough recruits like dermatology, um gastroenterology, uh, we have 26 new physicians starting this summer and next. And uh typically, a normal attrition rate for us might be five or six uh per year with retirements or somebody um takes an opportunity elsewhere. So um at least 12 to 15 incremental physicians joining our community. And I won't review every one of them, but in, and many of those are needed specialties. And then lastly, um, around nurses, for the first time in foreseeable memory, our open rate uh for our nursing staff is below the national average. And again, uh, national average is 22%. There's a lot of upheaval in healthcare and nursing right now. Um, it's kind of at the spear of it, while in, it's inclusive of many, many fields, but nursing certainly at the spirit of that, and we have dropped down to 18%. So again, wanted to share a few metrics, lot of hard work, um, well below me of the people who show up every day, wherever their facility is, to carry forward the mission. Um, this facility will help us to carry that legacy forward in terms of the care we deliver. And we're really excited, um, more work to do. Want to definitely emphasize more work to do. So I'm gonna invite Derek up here and ask him to uh go through the timeline and sort of the past.
True. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the committee. Uh, we can go to the next slide. So as, as Todd shared, I, I just have two slides. We'll keep this brief. Um, project is well over 50% uh completed. Certainly you can see that as you drive down Columbia Road and really from, from many areas across uh the city. And so the remainder of our timeline here, starting from the left, the permanent power will be on uh as the third quarter. Drywall completed in fourth quarter of this year. Finishes will be completed uh over the next 12 months following that with our substantial completion date. And our ownership uh takeover of the site on October 1 of 2024. Uh, so very pleased, we're, we're following our projections on timeline. In fact, a little bit sooner uh than what we had originally anticipated uh several months ago. Final occupancy will take place on uh in the first part of uh 2025, quarter one. Uh, so we've got commissioning of the building, training, orientation uh and a number of activities that take place between that one October and first quarter. We don't have an exact date set, but, but tentatively planned for the first part of March. And then finally, once we have that first patient through the doors in first quarter, uh, we will begin demo of the current hospital and then uh site work to include the parking lots and, and landscape, of course. Uh, that'll take us through to the end of uh quarter three, 2026. We go to the next slide. Just the last slide I have before we certainly uh open up for some questions. We intend uh to secure completion financing for our hospital project uh and supporting infrastructure projects in the amount not to exceed 150 million. Tentatively, we're planning for closer to 125, um, but with a top end of 150 uh through the issuance of taxes and bonds. As noted earlier, there is no recourse and no risk to the city. No taxpayer funds will be used whatsoever. Uh, we, a trustee is assigned, US Bank is our current trustee. We intend to use US Bank uh for this additional financing. Uh, and, and we'll monitor that on behalf of the bond brothers. So um, we're positioned very well to do this. As Todd said, we're in a, a, a strong financial position, uh certainly compared to our, our peer group across the industry. And this additional issuance takes us through the end of their project. Small pause there and if we can just go to the final slide and say thank you and certainly open things up for any questions we have.
Questions from the council? I have a quick question. What was the total amount of bonds that we helped you issue the first time we did that?
We did 400 million in 2021. We use 345 for the hospital and supporting projects. And I say supporting projects because we are building fulfillment center, some other renovations to campus. Uh, the remainder of that was used to refine or refund some existing debt at a lower rate.
Excellent. Mr. Weber?
He was, Mr. Phelan talked about the three uh legs of the Grand Forks. The partnership between the city, Ultra and UFT. With that, I'll, I'll move to the group.
Move by Weber, second by Ososki. Are there further comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say the five to say aye.
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 Close same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Good luck. Keep up the good work. Number 3.3, authorized staff to accept the NDDES cyber security grant or bid and approve any associated budget transfers and amendments. Mr. Johnson?
Good evening, uh, President Sandy, members of the committee. Uh, we're here tonight to uh get your approval on some bids uh and also to accept a, a grant that we got from the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services. The grant will allow us to uh purchase uh a one-year subscription to a cybersecurity tool uh called Threat Locker. It's a tool that we've been looking at uh kind of before this grant opportunity arose. Uh, grant came available last fall, we applied, and we were given the money in March and we went off for bid. Uh, the bids were presented uh in the staff report. High Point Networks out of West Fargo was uh the whole bid. Uh, and we'd like to request that approval tonight.
What exactly does the software do?
Uh, what Threat Locker does, it's a zero trust tool. So uh zero trust being kind of a, a, a key term in cybersecurity now. Uh, zero trust, what that basically means is uh anything within the cyber world uh is created based on trust. Uh, a zero trust is I won't allow you to do something unless we have that trust built between. Uh, software by nature has a lot of open doors. What this will do is close those open doors and allow only the things that are trusted to get through those doors. Uh, so what it will help with is a, a zero day attack, something that's unknown. Uh, have, we have zero days to uh prepare for that type of a uh breach or some form of code that is exploited. This will help us because some of those doors that are open based on those threats are closed. So. Works at the network level, at the uh endpoint level and at the user level.
How, how much work uh is it to install it?
Uh, it, it's not a ton of work. Uh, there's a lot of policy development, but there's a lot of policy development that's already developed based on uh that software has a lot of these. Uh, I'll give you an example, uh, Word, Microsoft Word, it's a word processor. It should be used to word process. There's a lot of things that were, can execute in the background that it shouldn't. It will close some of those loopholes. So we want to do it for one year. We'll see, we have some ways that we would like to budget for in the future. If it works for us, uh, we can convert a one-year subscription to a one-month subscri- monthly subscription to work us into uh budget year 2025 if it, if it works.
But you know, if it works, you won't know that it works.
Uh, that's exactly what we want to do for this.
Mr. Weber?
Keep the hackers out of Miami, that's for it.
Move by Weber, second by Ososki. Further comments?
Yes, Mr. Soski. So how come you have to hire a company to purchase the software or to implement? You can't implement it ourselves?
Um, we have, we have to buy it from someone. Basically, everything we do now is subscription based. So whether we buy it, um, and if you saw the quotes, we actually got a quote direct from Threat Locker as well. Um, they weren't the whole bidder, which is, is, is also common. But going through a vendor allows, they'll, they'll actually manage some of the profiles. Uh, they'll give us a lot of the profiles that have already been developed. There's implementation with it. Uh, we basically have to pay somebody to have it, so that's kind of the reason.
And can I ask a general question?
Sure.
So we're, we're using a company out of West Fargo. Didn't know anyone out of Grand Forks put in a bid?
Um, it, it's a fairly new technology. Um, I will say High Point is our security vendor that we do a lot of, uh, a lot of our networking work with. We have found that the size of our enterprise, a lot of times, is uh, it, it, it's tougher for some of the, the local firms to uh to support the size of, of the enterprise, like I was to say, phones and the size of our network is, is uh quite substantial. So it's, we've just found that sometimes it, it takes a little bit bigger security vendor to, to work with on that end. But uh, we were, we reached out to Threat Locker directly and it got uh some of the contacts to send the bits to and uh that there weren't any local ones.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, say the five to say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you. Good luck. The network. Um, I have 3.4, project number 8657, City Council Chambers remodel authorized purchase. The city council furnishes by a state contract list to approve any necessary budget minimums. Most of.
Uh, President Sandy, members of the committee, I wish I had in front of you this uh merely a quote from August work purpose. Uh, easiest way to go around finding furniture for uh the remodel of council chambers. Just look at the state, uh, there's not many individuals that compete against one another. We got the best pricing available. We did have a budget, it, it was much. So it's in there under soft costs.
So it's in there under soft costs, I'm just because it's bills are fifty thousand dollars. Project itself, just as a quick update, we're about eighty percent complete. So we're shooting for certificate. For CEO, we're shooting for twenty eight, however, probably thirty days after that, we'll do a bunch less things. Sometimes September, if you have furniture, furniture's not here yet, we'll run some furniture, we'll get you guys back in there. But what I did not do is I do have handouts and I tried getting it on the high drive. But we matched it with the colors that were picked out in the evening, the project that everybody was involved with. Myself, Johnson, John Bertram, the mayor, we all went through with the vendors, had obviously tried out the different items. Mayor ultimately went to. Steven Schram, here's what's, what looks good, so it's all matching. I know, I was going to ask if he's getting chairs, there's new chairs.
So the five hundred dollar chairs for the audience, are they similar to these chairs or are they?
Oh, no, no, and you know what, I can, why don't I just have them, I'll just see if you guys can take a peek if you have questions.
I want to see an example of an audience chair that's five hundred, eighty dollars.
This is going to help with those online, but.
Oh, don't worry, we'll get it online after the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so the audience chairs, is that what you're sharing there? And then you'll see the ones, ones of the council member seating. Virtually the same as the ones that are going to be below for staff members within the audience. If you remember on the drawing, the six staff members that sit in front of council where it's going to be addressing during that meeting. Very similar. And then Mayor also wanted several holding chairs, so we got some of those, so we can adjust within chambers for different events. So really, that's all I'm asking for is approval of a quote. We're moving forward to council chambers, once you guys approve the quote, then we'll.
So just confirming, the three hundred and thirty seven thousand, three hundred and ninety nine budget. I know you said this, I want to confirm, this eighty nine thousand isn't above and beyond that.
No.
This will come out of that, come out as budgeted.
It's in there.
All the other professional fees and everything else are still in there and we're not going over the one thirty seven, three hundred and ninety nine?
I don't want to say we're not going over, I will say we are in, within budget right now, we're eighty, eighty percent complete. That doesn't mean that if something came up that we have to come forward to you guys for a budget amendment. We are within budget and that was, was captured with the soft cost of this.
Comments, yes, Mr. Weber?
I'm glad City Council isn't picking up furniture. The basically hundred and forty thousand dollars for soft costs, ninety thousand for furniture, what's the other fifty thousand?
So the other, the other fifty thousand could be items such as our architect that started the project. So what happens is they have a larger real estate project putting it together. In this case, it's J L G. So J L G, they work hand in hand, but their services that they provide, that's not part of the G M P, the original contract that council approved. That's, that's a separate aspect of, so their costs start at one point and then as, as the project moves on, their costs get more. So like at one point it may be ten dollars and then towards the end it's a dollar. Those are the soft costs, that's with construction management or any change orders and things that need to be administered through the actual project, that's what's going on.
I'll move.
Move by Weber, is there a second? Second by Lunskey, any other comments? There are none, all those in favor, say the same by saying aye.
Aye. Bye.
Both same side, which carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Bozblum. Item three point five, approve your request to reallocate funding the fire department's vehicle replacement schedule. For purchase of a fire engine, order twenty twenty three, delivery twenty twenty five, and budget amendments achieved. Good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy, members of the council. Yes, basically what the title says is what I'm here for this evening is to request the approval, your approval to order a fire engine. Shortly in this year to take delivery in twenty twenty five. In our vehicle replacement, capital vehicle replacement schedule, we have slated for a fire engine replacement in twenty twenty five. Since the pandemic, a lot has changed the dynamics of fire apparatus. One is the time it takes to get up. Even if we wanted to, we couldn't buy one and get it sooner than two years. That's how long it's taking to build these things. The other thing that's happened is we've seen dramatic increases in the cost of these pieces. Seventy to eighty percent in the last quarters. It's been, it's been quite dramatic. So there's also some changes coming down the road with EPA standards that is going to make it even worse. They're predicting another five percent increase next year. By ordering now, they would put a chassis for us on hold that would preclude that additional increase in the future. And so we work with our finance department to ensure that we have funding in that account now. Finance has had, we've got a good plan in place moving forward with our vehicle replacement schedule, they're funding it adequately to meet that. I believe that could get to be a challenge if things don't level off here in the next few years. But as of now, we need some adjustments in the schedule. We do have the money there to do that budget adjustment and allow us to order the apparatus now. It comes in two payments, when the manufacturer receives the chassis, there's the first payment roughly four hundred, let's call it half. And then the rest is at completion. And there is the money in that capital account now to do this, if that is something you're willing to do.
Move by Osowski, second, second by Lunskey, do we sign in like some sort of a contract with them?
Yes, we'll do a purchase agreement. If you look in, in the report, we have a draft and I emphasize a draft because we need some budgetary numbers to work with. This is not the final, but when that happens, we do sign a purchase agreement that's signed by the finance, Marine and the mayor.
When I looked at the staff report earlier, I couldn't tell, is that Toine, Toine, is that a manufacturer, is that the brand of the?
That is Toine Manufacturing, yes, they're in Breda, Iowa. Fire apparatus are kind of a odd duck, they don't, it's not like going to a Ford, GM and Toyota dealership. They're specialty manufacturers, there's Pierce Manufacturing, there's Rev Group that bought out its partners, Toine Manufacturing, there's E One. They're kind of spread out around the country. Actually, as far as proximity, this and the Sparky R V are pretty close to us. But we think, in fact, Chief Kutchia made a trip down there with our apparatus committee to inspect this dealership, to see how they're put together. And make sure that they're building a quality piece of equipment. But yeah, it's, it's, that is the name for the apparatus's point.
Is there anything, just for Mr. Gaste, when you look at it, I mean, I recognize that the prices are going up and the likelihood of them coming down isn't great. But if we did see a seventy percent increase in the year, who knows what the prices might be in the end of twenty twenty four? If, if they're selling them to others for less than what we're buying ours for, is there any way you can get, get a price reduction?
If the price goes down.
Yeah, if, if, if they're selling them to other people for less, I mean, we're paying twice as much this year. And next year, all of a sudden, the price fails out because nobody's buying them.
That is a very good question. It is certainly something we can talk about in the contract negotiations to say if substantial decreases happen. That's something.
Yeah, I know it's going to happen too.
It makes perfect, it makes perfect sense.
So, Mr. Gaste, you know what? Yeah, great, okay. There's any other questions? That it is moved in second, thank you, all those in favor, say the same by saying aye. Both same side, which carries, appreciate it. And good work with the finance department. Three point six, engineering task order projects, eighty seven oh eight point one, U N D East Campus Sanitary Sewer Service.
Can I put the brakes on and ask, go back just a second?
Sure.
By paying in the two payments that we're saving a finance cost as well on this, is that the only way to buy that?
Make the break cash.
That's the only way is by paying cash?
Yes, you know, I think it's in the best interest of both. I mean, we, we do have to man for the full amount when we make the commitment, but we had it in the twenty five. Schedule of being spent, we will spend some of that now and later, but if cash flows, so it's, it's a good way to move forward. And hopefully it's the timing too, that's getting it ordered.
Very good.
Go to Dexter Perkins for reporting, regulations.
My apologies, Mr. Lee.
Good evening, thank you, President Sandy, members of the committee. What you have before you is a request to fund an engineering design task order with your associates for sanitary sewer improvements. In the U N D East Campus redevelopment area. For about a year, the engineering department has been partnering with the U N D Facilities Management Division. To look at what infrastructure improvements would be needed to support their campus as it develops. That area is supporting facilities like Memorial Village Phase One, Phase Two, softball field, the E R C, Pollard Athletic Center, et cetera. We have funded internally a series of task orders for scoping the first infrastructure item. That's maybe the most time critical, it's the sanitary sewer, which supports the opening of Memorial Village Phase One. And future Memorial Village Phase Two. So we are requesting a task order with your associates in the amount of roughly ninety six thousand dollars for design of sanitary sewer improvements. Now, what this will do is replace, relocate an existing private sanitary sewer that was installed in nineteen twenty seven by the university. That sewer has serviced this area, those facilities for almost a hundred years. It was paid for by U N D, it was operated and maintained by U N D. City has benefited greatly by not having to install sanitary sewer for this entire area. So we feel it's very appropriate to propose that this, if you pay for this proposed project to install sanitary sewer right away, which would service these facilities. So that begins with an engineering design task order that's proposed tonight. Of note, the engineering department will be approving this design and we will be taking over construction management responsibilities for this project to look out for city interests.
Questions for Mr. Leiberman? Oh, I'm with approval by Weber, second by Lunskey, further comment? There are none, all those in favor, say the same by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same side, which carries unanimously. Thank you, three point seven, create special assessment district for engineering task order price. Eighty seven oh three, oh four, oh five, oh seven, sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer, paving and streetlights, current eleven, six, reset division.
Thank you again, President Sandy. Back in June, the council approved a creation of special assessment districts and engine task orders for the current eleven Stormwater Pond and Forest Main. This proposed staff report for you proposes creating a district and design task order for the remainder of utilities and paving to support current eleven. Of note, in the staff report, there are four engineers reports which include the proposed districts for these four sub-projects. You'll note that for paving, we do have a couple classified roadways, Seventeenth Avenue, Fifty Fifth Street are classified. We also have some Trump centers, so a couple of these maps are a little larger than you might expect due to those considerations. We have been working with CPS of Grand Forks in the design of the pump station and the pond. We are recommending a task order with them in the amount of five hundred and fifty seven thousand, four hundred dollars for design of these remaining infrastructure. We, we do anticipate this total construction project will be about eight point eight million dollars. It's a large development. This will be special assessed to the benefiting properties with the exception of a city cost share for the classified roadways. Current city policy is the city will pay eighty percent of that cost because it's a classified roadway. The estimated city cost share is about three point one six million dollars, which is budget for a fund forty eight fifteen, the proposed twenty four budget. So with that, engineering is recommending approval, creation of the district, districts, excuse me, approval of the engineer's report. Approval of the task order with CPS and any necessary budget amendments.
Mr. Leiberman, do you have, have you seen design plans for what's going to be built on all this new?
As far as the developers intend.
Yeah.
We've had, we've had maybe inklings from the developer as to what they would like this to look like as far as logistics hub, et cetera. But as far as specific companies.
Like ultimately, it's going to be millions in investments.
Right.
Right, so when we start talking that we're putting in three million dollars in infrastructure. On the back end, the property taxes that we'll be gaining from the future, not to mention all of the other industry and jobs way outweighs the local city share. Right, Mr. Fealing?
You are, I think it's a really great point, counsel. Sometimes we get involved in a, the current dilemma, really what this is, is assignments since the logistics department is otherwise known, otherwise nobody would know the previous. I think it's important for the city from an economic development perspective. Number one, we've always said that we have corporate headquarters where the people actually live in Grand Forks. So that's a checkmark assignments, thank you to our assignments and the entire family for what they're trying to do up there. I think it's a big deal for Grand Forks. Number two, as you recall, some of the business park where the city of Grand Forks or economic development arm headed by land, get infrastructure ready. This is what we hope for. People would develop land in and around where they're located, they put in infrastructure, we would help facilitate with cost shares and setting up special assessment districts. So this is exactly what we wanted. And there's no telling what kind of great businesses the assignments are going to bring in. And I suspect as, as Mr., as Council President Sandy said, it's going to be a lot of the partners that they're already working with in the trucking industry and, and related. So I think this is a big deal, that this is coming to Grand Forks and it's being led by the private sector and it's being led by a local company. So I, and I think just think of all the industries it's going to bring to Grand Forks that are not in here with this. So it's, this is a big moment in Grand Forks and another sign that things are going well in Grand Forks.
Thank you, Mr. Fealing. Other questions, yes, Mr. Osowski? Moves by Osowski, second by Lunskey, further comment? There are none, all those in favor, say the same by saying aye.
Aye. Bye.
Both same side, which carries unanimously, thank you, Mr. Leiberman. And thank you to the assignments team group for everything they're doing for our community. Item three point eight, funding discussion, project eighty seven nineteen, design engineering for forty seventh Avenue South Interchange. Mr. Crayco, good evening.
Good evening, President Sandy and members of the committee. What you have before you is potential funding discussion for design engineering services. For the interchange, forty seventh Avenue and I twenty nine. As you may recall, a number of years back, City Council had approving requests to move forward on the environmental engineering or culinary engineering. And went after that as a typical eighty, ten, ten split where ten percent will be the local share. We were unsuccessful in that and one of the things we pushed for to show that the desire from the city was a fifty fifty cost share on the environmental engineering. That was approved and we ended up moving forward with that agreement with the DOT. Initially, it was estimated that that environmental dock was going to cost about three million dollars total. City share was going to be about one point five million. At the end of the day, it's looking like that's closer to about six hundred and fifty thousand. A future staff report will be coming forward that, looking at the alternatives for that for council's approval and selection for an alternative. At a upcoming committee of the whole and city council meeting. Recently, city staff was approached by DOT staff in looking at the next steps forward with this project. And that would be design engineering, or we'd be looking at getting the design, taking care of all that engineering work, kind of those final plans put together and out to bid. Their cost estimate on that is about three and a half million and they'd be looking to move forward with a fifty fifty cost share on that as well. This is not an actual agreement that we're discussing this evening. Right now, it is more of a, if this is how the city council wishes to move forward. And if so, then a engineering reimbursement agreement would come forward to committee of the whole and city council anyway. What that staff is recommending, approving that design engineering cost share with the DOT and moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Crayco, questions, comments, Zlonski?
So our cost share was going to be one point five million, but now it's going to be six hundred?
For the preliminary. Initially, we ended up offering a fifty fifty cost share, the assumption at the time to the environmental dock, it was three million. The actual came in, it got closer about one point three million, so our share was about six fifty.
Mr. Osowski? Move by Osowski, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Bean, thank you, Mr. Bean, any other comments?
No, I, I was thinking with the.
No, I was thinking with the request from the DOT for fifty fifty percent, I think it creates for a great relationship and support for ultimately getting the funding for the whole project. So it seems to be a step in the right direction.
Yeah, I would agree. It's a good sign that they're going to come through when we have to actually pay to build. Okay, any other comments? There are none, all is in favor, single five, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Close thing sign, which carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Crayco. Lastly, actually, I'm three point nine, River Valley Water Supply Project, interim series D agreements, interim financing agreement, series D and et cetera. Yes.
Yes, Council President Sandy, members of the committee whole. I'm going to start the presentation and I'm going to call on Mr. John Shockley, who's the light gate of the Water Authority Legal Council. And he's going to go through the series D that's in front of you this evening. And I just was thinking about all the, I mean, we're really looking at about a hundred year projects tonight. As boring as these meetings get, but if you look at redeveloping these side of U N D's campus that hasn't been redeveloped in the last hundred years. If you look at this I twenty nine interchange that we've been waiting on is another hundred year project. And so we're making a lot of progress, is what I'm trying to say and would have ever thought that when we went back during the pandemic. So and then the last project is another hundred year project, which is the River Valley Water Supply Project. And I just want to give a shout out to, and we have many staff members that are involved. And, and Mr. Bean is your representative on Lake Agassay Water Authority and has been for years. But Al Grasser is your city engineer. He's the chair of the technical advisory committee. Marines, the chair of the finance advisory committee. Melanie Harvey is on the operations group. And so we have a lot of city staff and really been scenes working in really critical leadership roles to move this particular project forward on the city's behalf and in the region's behalf. Next slide. So we've talked about during the legislative session, we, I think we have made some progress, not as much progress as mine. But I think this is the session that we're going to make significant progress. We want to put some more emphasis on this series D because series A, B, and C were, they were a little bit of a layup. Now, this is a little bit more of a jump shot for us as we move forward. Next slide. Next slide. So as we've talked about in the legislative session, the North Dakota Legislature did appropriate to a hundred and eighty million dollars. And it's upcoming biennium, they did make a legislative intent commitment up to nine hundred and fifty three million at a seventy five percent cost share. And so, and that's under a ten year bill. And we've talked a little bit about this. It's under separate legislation, the legislature created a water infrastructure revolving loan fund. I think it was in and around a hundred and fifty million plus or minus, and sixty million of that, we talked about this last week, was intended for the local cost of that twenty five percent. So we're going to spend some time and effort on that. It was set up as more of a forty year, two percent. John's going over some, maybe some more creative financing that will help us out as part of over the next forty years. You can't see it, but there's, there's one last bullet during it. It talks about this Endos. Endos is the Eastern North Dakota Alternative Water Supply, and I'm going to show you a map coming up here. That's a big deal because it's going to reduce some of the pipe capacity that pipelines that we need in this. It's going to allow us to use some of the federal public works that are out there. And I think in and around people best means maybe it's about a two hundred million dollar cost savings for the project. It'll be an operation, operational cost savings because we won't have as much pumping costs. And hopefully Senator Hogan is working on federal corporations that could come to the project too. So there's a lot of momentum bringing this project forward to include. When we last talked about, there was going to be a state local project, still is, but now Senator Hogan's talking about bringing some federal corporations to help us out on this project. When I talk about the sixty million dollars, I just want to highlight Grand Forks this year. So Grand Forks is about fourteen percent of the project. And when I say Grand Forks, I'm going to say the Grand Forks Metro. The Fargo Metro is sixty seven percent. And then Johnson spent some time on this, the remaining nineteen percent, which are the small users, and we're going to talk through that a little bit. And so when you look at Grand Forks, it's fourteen percent, or of that sixty million, we're eight point six million. And the estimated annual payment is about three hundred and sixteen thousand per year. Next slide. So here's the project itself, and I just want to point out, there's lots of segments on here. But if you look at the right side is the important part. This is a two hundred and forty million dollar work plan, forty two miles of pipeline that's shovel ready. Forty miles that will be under design. And then finally, this Endos, which is that federal portion, there's eleven miles of pipeline design in that particular area. And so when you total all that up, that gets up to that two hundred and forty million dollars. So shovel ready projects, pipeline projects is a hundred and ninety eight million, a hundred and ninety eight point seven million to continue to design on those segments is another eleven point two. And then finally, this Endos design is seven point one, which includes that McCloskey Canal intake and Biota Water Treatment Plant. So it's, it's, it's a large, lots of work. This is historic for us on this particular project. So if you add the two hundred and seventeen million dollars plus the twenty three million, there's a little footnote down there that says other, other program costs that gets you the two hundred and forty million dollars. Whatever the goal of the team right now is, if you look at the orange line where those, the Endos areas, is to begin designing some of the intake and Biota for the water treatment plant design, work on the pipeline design because the goal is to get that more shovel ready. So when Senator Hogan is able to, and some of his key committees able to provide funds to this project, we can say that we're shovel ready and we're ready to move forward in this particular length. You can see where there's some dotted lines that head towards Washburn. And that's that segment that would come at a later time if we can use this McCloskey Canal area with the Biota Treatment Plant. The Lawa, and we partnered on this, there is an intake that will be in and around Washburn that will be seen as kind of a secondary or a backup intake on the Missouri River itself. And so we got a lot of redundancy. We got a lot of backup plans to this just because with the federal government allowing other alternative strategies, which are going to, I think, better the project and reduce the cost of the particular project. Next slide. Next slide show. So the important part of this is that, you know, Garrison Diversion, who is, I'll call it the quasi lead state agency on this particular project on behalf of the state of North Dakota. They're going to be going to the State Water Commission that's led by Governor Burgum in this case. And they're going to be go, they're going to go and ask for this seventy million dollars of appropriation coming up here. And so there's going to be some meetings that they have pre-meets at the State Water Commission in July. And then finally, in August, we anticipate that this seventy million dollars will be appropriated. And one of the questions the State Water Commission is going to ask is, where are we at with Lawa and its member users, including Grand Forks? But that's sixty million dollar cost share. And so that's why this interim agreement is in front of you because when Garrison goes ask for the state appropriation, they want to be able to say they have Fargo, Grand Forks wrapped up in an interim agreement. And we'll talk about these smaller users, but that's why we're here today, trying to get you folks to approve this in July. I'll just say, my, our colleagues down in Fargo, if this proceeds on July seventeenth, we'd ask for your final approval of this series D agreement. Fargo will be soon thereafter on July twenty fourth, they anticipate having their series D agreement approved in advance of the August State Water Commission meeting. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Shockley to go over some of the particulars that we're asking you to move forward with this as part of a series D. Thanks, John.
Thank you. Next slide, please. Next slide. Once again, my name is John Shockley. I serve as general counsel for the Lake Agassay Water Authority. That is partnering with Garrison Diversion Authority in developing the project, the River Water Supply Project. Tonight, we're going to talk about the series D. It's very serious, the interim financing agreement, it's very similar to the series B and the series C with some important exceptions. The first is that it's significantly more, it's total sixty million dollars. The prior series B, series C have been lesser amounts. You may ask yourself, why do we need interim series agreements for financing? It is a function of Garrison Diversion's ability to finance projects long term. Currently, they need to have in place a project partnership agreement with the end users in Lawa. That is a very complex document that involves the state while water modeling and some other very technical issues that staffs of Fargo, the staffs of Grand Forks and myself and the attorneys involved are still reviewing that agreement and it's not ready to come before the different end users. And so in the interim, we need to have interim financing agreements in place in which Garrison is issuing the debt, but the end users are essentially guaranteeing the payment until the P P A comes into place. And so this is just a function of that ongoing series A, series B, series C, and now we're on series D. Once the P P A is signed, those, these interim agreements will sunset and the P P A will take over and control. So during the application process, Garrison asked, and we'll go over some of the debt structuring alternatives that have been offered by Bank of North Dakota. And so if you want to advance the next slide, let's briefly go over where we're at with respect to the interim agreements. So the series A agreement had a different cost share. You Todd discussed the seventy five, twenty five percent cost share. The first series A had a ninety ten cost share, and that was expressed by the legislature early on that they have a ninety ten cost share. That went away when the appropriations got larger. And so series B matches the current cost share that's in place of thirty five and seventy five percent. Under the series B, Grand Forks and Fargo, because it was a fairly small mall, just covered the entire local share mall. Under series C, with very similar terms, the series A, B, and B, the local share was split between Grand Forks, Fargo, and Garrison paid the eighteen percent for the small users. So when we talk about allocation of water, most of the water, about sixty seven percent, give or take, is going to the Fargo-Cast County area. The smaller percentage, Grand Forks, and then the remaining eighteen, eighteen and nineteen percent is being split up among small users. And that eighteen to nineteen percent was being covered by Garrison with the idea that the entities that prepaid that small user eighteen percent would be reimbursed when a P P A was signed. Now, a series D, the eighteen percent, because the total amount of the series D has grown sixty million. The eighteen percent is about eleven and a half million dollars. And so it's a little more significant amount of money that we're dealing with, with the small users. And so as a result, we're spending a little bit more time on how do we address the small users. Next slide. And Todd had previously gone over this, but just to kind of give a big picture, the legislative intent, which was a very successful legislative session for the project. We received nine hundred and fifty three million of legislative intent from the state legislature. So they're going to fund up to nine hundred and fifty three million of the total project costs. That means that under the current financial model and build, had there be about three hundred and eighteen million of local share using a twenty five percent cost share requirement. And then on the bottom, you can see how we're projecting out and part of it's covered by the different council members. But the series D would be about a sixty million dollar local cost share. If you take that out through E F T and H through different tranches of debt, it'd be about seventy three million, seventy nine million, eighty four million, and twenty million in the final year of construction. And so our hope is that by the end of this biennium, we'll have a P P A in place. And so we won't be coming back to the council asking for interim agreement approvals. But there will be a P P A that you'll have to review and to get. Next slide, please. Given the size of the debt that's being taken on and the nature of the project, and Todd is actually very correct when he said it's a hundred year project. Our goal has been to make the multi-generational loan rather than a short fifteen or twenty year loan to get a longer term, so we have forty years plus having a different type of debt structuring where the cities and counties can sort of grow into the debt. It would still be two percent, but it would slowly ramp up the principal payments as the population in Cast County and the population in Grand Forks grew. You wouldn't see as much impact on water usage rates. Next slide. And kind of graphically illustrating it, if you use the traditional pay, proposal payment schedule where you have level debt service. The purple and the first example for series D is your principal and the orange is the interest, like a traditional home mortgage where you pay most of the interest upfront. And then your principal payments are increasing over the life of the loan. The second slide shows the different tranches of debt late in there. And I know it's really hard to see the different colors, but kind of gives you an indication of what the debt service would look like if we layered all of the debt in. About twelve million dollars per year right after project's substantial completion. And so, next slide, please. And so when Garrison was looking at this with the Bank of North Dakota along with Lawa representatives, we wanted to try to shape the debt and look at different proposed repayment structures. And Bank of North Dakota indicated that they were willing to look at that structuring. And so they're going to keep the forty year term, keep the two percent interest rate, and then allow for the best match of the growth curve. Next slide. And so you can see how much of a difference it makes for the users. Your initial payments are much lower and it allows the communities to kind of grow into that debt service. For example, right after the project is substantially complete, instead of a twelve million dollar payment project, it's a little bit under ten million. And so you have less of the payment that you can spread over a smaller number of users as the user base increases. You're not seeing such a substantial increase for the users. Next slide, please. And this kind of shows just the savings that happens when you're, you're shaping the debt, you're pushing the principal back later on in the project. And next slide. And this just is a different ways that we're currently looking at what's the best way to shape that debt. It hasn't been finalized yet, but there will be a shaping to it based upon what is, based upon input from both Fargo and Grand Forks and what matches the population growth trends the best. Next slide. So the alternatives that were provided by Bank of North Dakota were, once again, forty years at two percent. And then they're offering interest only for years three through five and then shape repayment for years six to forty. There's also a discussion about the eighteen percent, if we could defer that for the first two years. Bank of North Dakota has indicated they're willing to do that. And they've also recently indicated they're willing to do a hundred percent deferral for the first two years. And so you really want to work with the finance teams to make sure what the best fit is for the largest users, the Grand Forks and Fargo. Alternative B is, once again, it's just shaping the repayment of years three through forty. Next page, please. And so the next steps are probably the important part. The loan application has been submitted, completed and submitted on June twenty sixth. It's already done. The series D agreement is being reviewed by the Fargo City Commission and the Grand Forks City Council in July. We're currently working through, how are we going to address the eighteen percent of the local cost share attributed to the small users? I want to stress that we've come up with a number of different alternatives and how we deal with that eighteen percent. And we've been working closely with City of Fargo and Grand Forks and their legal council. And my understanding based upon today's meeting is that we're going to hear more from Garrison this week on what some of the different options are that we've suggested and maybe some potential new solutions that we didn't think of on how to deal with the eighteen percent. So there'll be more to come on that dealing with the eighteen percent. The preliminary commission review is on July thirteenth. And then the loan application by State Water Commission will be on August tenth. And then we're anticipating the final underwriting and loan closing in the early fall. And so we'll have, that will have time, we'll have finalized what that debt shaping looks like, working closely with these two communities. Overall, the agreement is very similar. Overall, the agreement is very similar on the series D as to the series B and series C, except for we're still working through that eighteen percent that is allocated to small users. Garrison on the series C had taken out of their reserves to pay a small user share. They no longer have sufficient funds in their reserve funds to make an eleven million dollar payment on behalf of small users. And so it's requiring a little bit of time to work through how to deal with that. Can certainly answer any questions that you may have, but or Todd has anything.
Anyone have questions related to the financing of series D, Mr. Weber? The overall presentation.
That's all, yeah, sure.
So we've been working on this for a long time and of all the hundred-year projects, this is probably the most important to the future of the community. This is the first time I've heard about federal dollars. We've quite intentionally steered clear of that and now all of a sudden it's kind of our magic bullet final solution. What happened to the concerns about this?
So there's a couple of things going on. The initial concern about the federal dollars was if the entire project was qualified for federal dollars, you would have to go through the NIPA review process and get a record of decision approval. The project went through that, but it never reached the record of decision. If we go through with the endos portion, that's had a lot of the environmental reviews done and you can segregate that endos portion out of the entire project. And so the same concerns are not present because you're isolating just the endos component rather than the entire project.
When did we come up with that? That's clever. It's the ender works. It's the end run.
Yeah, the end of the road.
It's probably within the last two years.
Two years?
No. It's, I think we've been trying to work through it. We weren't comfortable publicly talking about it yet until we had it. I had run the trap lines with the different federal agencies along with Senator Holden's office before we started talking publicly about this being an option. And there are, the other unique part about that is there are potential federal financing programs available for the, in addition to federal funding for endos, there might be additional federal funding programs that would serve as a backup if Bank of North Dakota is unable, you know, let's say we get to two hundred and fifty million dollars and Bank of North Dakota says we can't do the remaining amount. You may have the ability to tap into US EPA funds or different types of federal funds just for the federal portion of the project.
On the PPA, I realize that's a work in progress. It sounds like currently that the main participants are Fargo, Grand Forks, and Garrison. Garrison is going to cover the small users. Is, is that what I heard?
Sort of, the, the plan is to get an initial draft. The initial draft of the PPA is complete. Right now, the cities of Fargo and Grand Forks are really focused on the technical exhibits, the PPA, which are almost as voluminous, more so than the actual legal agreement. And those contain elements in there about the state model, how much water should go past the city? How much water should be dumped into the river? How the distribution works? So they're very technical. The plan is that once Fargo and Grand Forks have, feel comfortable in the comments that they've made to the PPA, then we would go on to meet with the small users and present the PPA to them. Recognizing that many of the small users probably don't have the same technical resources, they don't have full-time engineering offices, they don't have the same type of legal staff available, and they may have some comfort in that Fargo and Grand Forks have reviewed this. They don't, I don't want to say don't, won't do as in-depth of a review, but there may be some comfort in that, okay, I have, you know, half a percent share. I'm not concerned, as concerned about reading the exhibits that closely or hiring a, you know, a private engineering firm to review it. So that was, that was and I think our goal is to have those meetings with the small users is the end of this year, beginning of next year, so that we can, before we go to the next legislative session, we have in place a PPA or at least commitments from the small users that they're going to sign up. Because under the PPA, at eighteen percent, let's say that sixteen percent of it is allocated to the small users and the other two percent drop out. Under the PPA, the concept is that two percent goes back, is re-divided up between the users. And a user could go back and sell that. So if somebody had a one percent share, City Act had a one percent share and they said, no, I don't want it at this time. And three years from now, they have a plant that comes in and says, we need water. And they raise their hand and say, we would like to have that share back. They can repurchase that, but they will be paying a premium on that repurchase because they weren't in, in at the beginning and the other users has some cost. And so there's some real technical issues there. How do you price that? What is the question? And so that's, that's why it's taking a little bit of time to work through.
And we're required to sell?
I have to go back. I don't think that you're required to sell. You could certainly
exercise the option.
Yeah, sure.
And are the small users, are we talking counties, rural water districts? What do you mean by small users?
They'd be cities like Valley City, Cooperstown.
Drayton?
Drayton.
Hillsborough?
And rural water. A lot of these towns are also served by rural water systems too. And so you're going to see, you're going to see some smaller towns or states, but also some regional water systems that are serving both cities and rural areas.
And our friends and partners at the county, are they, how do they?
They fit in me. Only in respect, we have two rural water systems around. One is East Central and the other one is Agassi Rural Water. They're in our region and they're part of the project, a very small percentage. As far as our graphics come.
On the kind of balloon payment that's been set up to take advantage of population growth, assumes population growth. If, if we don't have population growth, we're in trouble on this. But if we don't have this project, we can't have this population. The series D will approve sometime this month? Or are we looking for approval tonight?
Yeah, we're asking for our recommendation or approval next Monday.
And then the final underwriting, that will come back to us this fall. Those are the two main decision points first. So you're looking for a series D approval tonight?
Mr. Sandy, I'll second it. I'd like to make a couple of comments if I could.
Certainly, yeah. Mr. Weber. Oh, she's Mr. Bean's second, so the Mrs. Soski was first with the text. Mr. Bean, questions, comments?
Yeah, just, just a very, I think the presentation covered almost all the things that at least I was hoping would take place. I think it was fully understood. The project has been a long time coming. And there was a great article in the paper about the project and the fact that we're, we're actually under construction on the project, which is a major milestone in and of itself. And this last legislative session, the state came up with a significant influx of funds and, and a commitment to a ten-year build. Those are all, you know, historic for the project. And we really need to, of course, make sure that we are financing the local share and having that, both the debt shaping and the ability to have a long-term low-interest loan, the forty-year two percent loan is really what makes this affordable. So I just would let everybody know, I fully support the recommendation and I look forward to the next phases of the project.
Thanks, Mr. Bean. Are there, are there any of these small users or any of the Minnesota? Like Shelley or Halsted or?
The only users that are on the Minnesota side potentially are East Grand Forks and Moorhead.
Really?
Because the reason why I say that is, the transportation system is going to be through the Red River. So you essentially have to be adjacent to the Red River. And so in Grand Forks, we have an intake on the Red River. We would probably, we would likely supply water to East Grand Forks through our interconnect that we have in place right now. And obviously a harbor more, so you got basically in and around the stem of the Red River.
And Mr. Sandy, one of the other reasons is the money that's coming from this is coming from the state of North Dakota, not from the state of Minnesota. So with, with the financing and everything from North Dakota, it's primarily been a North Dakota project. And the Minnesota communities do probably have other alternative access to water that we don't have. So it really works okay for all of us.
But Halsted doesn't currently pull water from the Red River?
I believe Halsted gets their water from groundwater.
Really? Even though the Red River's right there, they get it from groundwater, okay? I believe you.
I, I think we could verify that, I would, but I really do believe because surface water is really expensive to get into, treat and distribute compared to groundwater.
That's true. In a community, there's that, I suppose. Can, can, I like to ask questions about volume, volume of water. So when we started talking about this project many years ago, we were estimating how much water we would need for our community. That's kind of how we got to how big the pipes were going to be, right? The reason there's a six-foot pipe that's two hundred miles long or getting smaller, yes, but was because we needed to push so much, one hundred and sixty-five cubic feet of water per second through this pipe that would ultimately dump somewhere, get to Wapentin, pass Fargo, come to Grand Forks. Hopefully it doesn't all evaporate and get used on the way. The point was we knew, we knew in theory how much water we were going to need. What is that? What is the water? That we're, that we're, what's our allocation? When we're in the five-hundred-year, no question, things are, we're walking across the Red River. How much water are we getting out of this?
I think, very good question, Council President Sandy. We're nominating for our average day. And so even in a really bad day, we're going to have, we're going to be mitigating our water use in our community. But we nominate both for industry, our current industry, our current residential. And then we did have some inflation with, you know, future industry and future residential growth. But we're not, we're not planning as part of this project for any peaks. We're planning for whatever that average day is and we'd have lots of drought mitigation.
At that point, we would have considered with drought mitigation.
We would, yeah, but we would, our economy would be sustained. We'd have some mitigation, significant mitigation as part of it. And remember the other thing when, I had to bring up the word full font, but remember we went through all the full font stuff? Kept talking on and on about we're going to have enough water because we have this project coming. Remember what we said, if one of the changes in the project, we were going to nominate for our share of the water. Well, what the model showed when we had the gal from Boston Water come up here, essentially Fargo's going to use our not water nomination. As part of this PPA, we're going to have them agree to return so much of the water to the, through the Red River system to us. And so essentially, we're going to have reuse water. Eventually, they're going to use our nomination, whether it's National Bureau or whether it's our, our nomination project. But then as part of that, they have to agree to return a certain percentage to Grand Forks. And so I think even in a really tough, I think what the model should be, even really tough times, Grand Forks, because of our wider river, all the tributaries coming in via the Red Lake, we're going to be in relatively good shape to those communities southwest. And we just, as part of that PPA, the important part is we just kind of have part of returning of their wastewater to us. And part of the discussion is if Fargo, we have this tiered system, pretty good in the, I think we're either tiered two. I think Fargo's tiered one. Fargo doesn't like being tier one because when you're in tier one, that means you have to pay more because you're getting water direct. And so Fargo would like to have us look at how we tiered the system originally. And when we did these tier systems, just when this project was a federal project way back in two thousand something. And so we're going to work through some of those things with the PPA agreement. But I think in the end Fargo is always going to pay more per unit of water just because they're getting it sooner and, you know, and they need it more than we do. What they want to do is have a further discussion with Grand Forks regarding what the value of their return flow is and how should that be priced versus what we're pricing for. So there are going to be a lot of details. And when John said this agreement, I don't know how, with all these, all the appendices are part of this agreement, it's a monster. It's probably a thousand, going to be a thousand-plus page document. And the other challenge we have is, we have, we have our city attorney Dan Goss and Mr. Shockley and our colleagues in Fargo. However, we have all these appendices that have been developed by consultants, right, that are, the consultants for Garrison diversion. So if you're reviewer, criminalist, the attorney said we should have somebody independently review all this. To us, we're going to figure out some sort of review process for us at Fargo, reviewing all these documents. So before we have you sign them, we've got some sort of third-party review on all the various component parts that got it. Because Garrison is not Lawa, they're not the city of Grand Forks. We have to have some independent review. So over the next two years, there's going to be a lot of work and effort and partnership with our colleagues itself.
So maybe Mr. Bean knows, that six-foot pipe, do we use a hundred percent of the water at maximum, at maximum pumping? Will Grand Forks and Fargo, to whatever we've grown to in twenty years and the other users, will we use a hundred percent of the water that comes through that pipe? Or have we actually done a good job of overbuilding? So we're maybe only using sixty percent of that capacity?
Well, I can, I can, I'll let Ken jump in in a second, but it's the way the project operates and this based upon my understanding of reading the documents is that the pipe, remember, will bring water into Lake Ashabula and raise. The water has to begin pumping early in the year. So you can't wait till you're in a drought situation and say flip the switch. So it takes time to build up the reservoir and then it takes twenty days from the fall till down just to get to Fargo and probably another ten days to get from Fargo to Grand Forks. And so there's a long lead time, so they need to fill the pool. And so it, there is enough conservative, conservative engineering within the project so that you have a sufficient pool level that you can draw the pool down, still have capacity left in the pool to support those longer operations. Because you could have a drought here that's really, really severe or you could have, you know, nineteen-thirties drought or you might only have two years of drought. And so the engineers had to build enough conservative some into the pipe size. So the pipe isn't really necessarily engineered to what the daily use of the users is. It's engineered to fill the reservoir in a timely manner so that you can draw upon that water. Maybe Ken can add to that.
So Actually, John's been around. He knows that probably how this thing was engineered as well as the engineers do. So he's pretty much, he's right on top of that. We, we, if we were going to size a pipe that would give us instantaneous flows like we would use at peak times, this would be unaffordable. So the way we did it is you actually reduced the size of the pipe and you use Lake Ashabula as a regulating pool of giant storage pond that already exists and was intended for water supply. And it really makes, makes this project affordable. Otherwise, we couldn't be doing it.
I could add one more thing and I'm going to ask John Shockley, he worked a lot on the hardware diversion project and working with the state on, you know, how they financed that. And one of the issues I think we'd like to do in this project is, we have term limits now in North Dakota. And so what we want to do is we want to be able to grandfather this project in because there's no telling what the two-two looks like. And so one of the goals of this next session is with that nine hundred and fifty-three million dollar, like you say, ten dollars, it's intent. We intend to do good things. As you talked about seller point, all it is is
Very different.
It's just intent, year-to-year intent. So I'd like to have John talk about, you know, what would bonding look like and how do we solidify the project maybe in the next session, drawing from your experience and what we need to do so that we're really in the next session are off. So, great question. So with the diversion project, we had, we're able to get the legislature to provide legislative intent very similar in this project. And while legislative intent isn't binding, the legislature typically doesn't like to provide legislative intent because they feel it's a moral, moral promise that, you know, we've, we've promised that we're going to make this allocation. What happened with the diversion is we had What happened with the diversion is we had opportunity with low interest rates and the state bonded the remaining amount. There was about $480 million left of their legislative intent that they had to distribute. And so we were able to demonstrate state legislature that if you pre-funded rather than metering it out over a 10-year period, there's cost savings and shortening up your construction cycle. And so they were able to reduce the principal allocation by $20 million. And so they bonded against the full month of it. There's no guarantee if the next legislative session would bond, but it's certainly something that you, you could pursue that you'd ask them if they were, would be willing to bond for the remaining amount. And they've, they've done it before. And it really becomes a question of where the legislators are at with respect to bond.
So, and we've allocated a snapshot in time. And recognizing that Fargo's growing faster than we are anyway. So they'll be pulling more water out of the Lake Ash Tabula at that point in the future. And therefore they'll be returning more. So our share or the possible share will be greater anyway, even though we're potentially probably paying more as a percentage today.
That's the answer to your question, isn't it?
Then we need to, that is, bingo. Yes. Any, any other questions or comments? There was a motion in the second. All those favor seats, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item four, council member in honor of the discussion, Mr. Livo. Anything tonight? No? Okay, Mr. Solsky?
Thank you.
No? Mr. Weber?
Perfect.
Ms. Lunskey?
I just want to apologize for being late.
All right. Mr. Bean?
Nothing.
Okay. I, I do have a question for Mr. Grasser. Where, where are we on the planning for the 42nd Demers Underpass Overpass Side Pass? I think when the mayor was talking, times of the essence. So at what point are we going to see alternatives or how's that going?
That's coming together. You're going to see something here probably in the next month or so. We're going to have to pick out of those five alternatives that we're still carrying. We're working on finalizing the recommendation on that. And you'll be seeing that here in the next, like I said, next month or so.
But there's not any new designs. We're, it's one of the five that we've already looked at.
Correct.
Okay. Well, we looked at many more than five, but one of the last five. Correct. Got it. Okay. Did you need any preliminary input from the council in advance? Okay, very good.
We actually do have.
Yes.
We did a lot of really, really important work today. It was quiet. There wasn't a lot of excitement around it, but this was some of the most important work we've done for a while.
I hope, I hope all of the city employees don't take my, thank you, Mr. Grasser, don't take my questions and comments negatively because all I really want is what's best for them and our community. Ms. Solsky?
Watch your turn.
Second, Ms. Lunskey. All those in favor, I think, if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you.